All right, well, it is 6:00 PM. And this is the City of Iowa City formal meeting. And we are at the Senior Center in Iowa City. And I'm going to ask for roll call, please.
Fergus?
Here.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, welcome to everyone in the public that is in person or virtually. And we're going to start with some proclamations, which is item number two. Two A is Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day. This is going to be read by our Mayor Pro Tem, Sully.
Whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to ensure the safety and the security of those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is serious for public safety concerns, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk for the fire, and whereas between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM are the peak alarm time for fire deaths, when people tend to be asleep, and whereas almost two-thirds of home fire deaths in the United States resulted from firing home with inoperable smoke alarms or no smoke alarm, and whereas the designation of the special day to remind residents of Iowa City to change their battery in their smoke alarm time coincide with the four ritual of changing clock would greatly diminish the chance of this tragedy occurring in Iowa City, and whereas a smoke alarm should be replaced every 10 years, and whereas November 7, 2021 is the day for community members of Iowa City change their clock from daylight saving time to standard time. Now therefore, I on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, DuHarp, Brooklyn, November 7, 2021, to be change your clock, change your battery day in Iowa City, and urge all residents to change their smoke alarm batteries, install new smoke alarm where needed, and to replace the smoke alarm if they are 10 years old or older. And here to accept is our Fire Marsh, Brian.
Thank you. Seen you a couple of weeks ago at one of these council meetings, but this one is, it's a little bit earlier than when the actual date is, so November 7th is the day that we change our clocks, and then with the same time, we change our batteries and our smoke alarms. I'm going to hit a couple of the big points off of the proclamation. Two-thirds of home fire deaths result from fires in homes without a working smoke alarm. And there's many reasons why that could be, they may just be old, they may have taken it out to put in something else. There's multiple things that can happen. We do see that a lot when we go out, so we try to educate when we're out on the streets and going and helping people with making sure that they're having a good, safe living environment and place to be. Also, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a home fire in half. So I mean, that's very important to have when it works. Every fall, we have this life-saving habit of changing and testing the batteries and smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors, because we don't want to forget those either. They're very important as well. One thing that you need to do when you're changing your batteries is take the smoke alarm down and look at the back of it, see what the date is. It should be stamped on the back somewhere there. Smoke alarms are a 10-year device, so we want to make sure that if it's older than that, we want to get it replaced. That way, we know for sure we have one that's working right. Most of them will, if they do have a battery that's getting low, they'll have a chirp. If they go off for a fire, it's going to be a lot of beeps and really loud, but you may hear just like a little chirp, and that will go on every so often. That's letting you know that that battery's ready to be changed, it's low. So listen for that and make sure that works like that. They do have different types of smoke alarms. One of them that's becoming most prevalent are the 10-year sealed. Those, we don't have to change any batteries at all, and they should last 10 years, but at the end of those 10 years, we need to replace them. When you do have smoke alarms in your house, it's best to have one in each bedroom, one outside of the bedroom or the living areas there, and one on every floor. So if you've got a two-story house, the second floor needs one, the first floor, and even the basement. With that, you know, we just want to make sure that everybody takes care of this at their houses, and we do offer assistance to people who need it, if they need help changing their batteries or smoke alarms. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much.[366.02][366.02][applause] Proclamation two B is LGBTQ+ History Month. Whereas the path towards LGBTQ+, equality and liberation has been paved by courageous persons who have fought for the right to love and be loved, and there are positive societal contributions of advance in areas of diversity, inclusion, equity, and respect deserve recognition. And whereas LGBTQ+ History Month celebrates and commemorates those who fought for equal rights and services for the LGBTQ+ community, and as a means of educating others, promoting a culture of acceptance and inclusivity, and advancing equality for all. And whereas the City of Iowa City is proud of its diverse community, committed to equality for individuals for all sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions, and whereas today Iowa City endeavors to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists, recognize the multitude of identities that make each of us unique individuals, and envision a safe inclusive world that allows all members of society to live openly and truthfully. And whereas in 1994 Rodney Wilson, a Missouri high school teacher, and the first openly gay public school teacher in Missouri, believed a month should be dedicated to the celebration and teaching of gay and lesbian history, and gather other teachers and community leaders. They selected October because public schools are in session and existing traditions such as Coming Out Day and the First and Second LGBT marches on Washington were in October. And whereas October 1, 2021 marked the 27th anniversary of LGBTQ+ History Month, and whereas today Iowa City endeavors to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists, recognize the multitude of identities that make each of us unique individuals, and envision a safe inclusive world that allows all members of society to live openly and truthfully. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 in Iowa City as LGBTQ+ History Month. And to receive this is Aidan Belting, LGBTQ Iowa Archives and Library Director, accepting this. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Aidan Belting, and I'm the Executive Director of the LGBTQ Iowa Archives and Library. On behalf of our organization, I want to thank Mayor Teague and members of City Council for proclaiming October as LGBTQ History Month in Iowa City. LGBTQ History Month offers us as a community the opportunity to learn, celebrate, and share the queer history that has always surrounded us. Sharing and celebrating our past affords LGBTQ people visibility in the face of ongoing homophobia and transphobia in our broader community and state, on one hand, while more importantly, providing legitimacy and representation for LGBTQ youth who need fierce advocacy, love, and protection. LGBTQ History Month invites us to reflect on how far our community has come and what we've survived in order to find ourselves and one another today. When we look to the local history of queer life in Iowa and Iowa City more specifically, we recognize lesbian, gay, bisexual, queer, transgender, non-binary, and gender nonconforming people as our neighbors, friends, teachers, family members, and engaged citizens, as people who have always or have been ever-present and integral to the formation of our city. LGBTQ history in Iowa has long been overshadowed by the history of queer life in urban centers on the East and West Coasts of the United States. Proclaiming October as LGBTQ History Month in Iowa City is a firm commitment to acknowledging that LGBTQ people have always and will always exist in smaller cities in the Midwest, including ours. We will always make history worth celebrating during and beyond the month of October. Thank you.
All right, and the next proclamation is two C, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and this will be read by Counselor Pauline Taylor.
Whereas October 2021 marks the 76th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and whereas the purpose of this month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of workers with disabilities, and whereas the history of National Disability Employment Awareness Month traces back to 1945, yet the unemployment rate of people with disabilities has consistently remained around 70%, and thus represents an untapped talent pool, and whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas Iowa City is proud to have several organizations who are committed to educating employers and the community about disability employment issues, and providing people with disabilities job coaching and assistance accessing quality jobs. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities, and work to pursue the goals of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities. Accepting this proclamation will be Jolene Sorensen from Systems Unlimited and Andrew Ostrout, who is an individual served by Systems Unlimited.
Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, this is Andy Ostrout, and I am Jolene Sorensen. I'm Director Development at Systems Unlimited, and we are honored here today to accept this proclamation. We want to thank you so much for identifying this as an issue across, as we as Iowans are facing a staffing shortage. People with disabilities have twice as high employment or unemployed, and so it's very important that we look at this as a resource and understand that the people that we serve are very much a part of our community and can really give back. And not only can they give to us, but we can give to them the opportunity to have the dignity of being employed. So we really appreciate today that you made this National Disability Employment Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.[842.32][842.32][applause]
The next proclamation is two D, which is Public Health Professionals Day, also read by Counselor Pauline Taylor.
Whereas public health workers and professionals are an indispensable component to the health and safety quality of our community, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic required an unprecedented response from public health professionals, and took a physical, mental, and emotional toll on those individuals performing essential work in our communities. And whereas the American Public Health Association reports a shortage of public health professionals has been a growing issue in the United States, and surveys of these workers throughout the pandemic have shown increased burnout and desire to leave the profession. And whereas preventative, proactive, and professional public health education and services have been integral throughout this pandemic, and will be even more important to respond to future public health crises in the future. And whereas the often thankless work of Johnson County Public Health throughout the COVID-19 pandemic has helped keep local governments, businesses, and the community healthy, safe, and informed. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 20, 2021, as Public Health Professionals Day, and urge all community members to join me in honoring the public health professionals who serve us not just this day, but in every opportunity throughout the year. Accepting is Sam, is Sam Jarvis in the audience?
Yes.
Yes, there he is. Accepting is Sam Jarvis from the Community Health Division.
Well, on behalf of Johnson County Public Health, thank you. This is quite the surprise. I believe we intended to perform our usual provide updates as we have done throughout the pandemic, and this is just, thank you for this acknowledgement. Today is 500, day 590, for those of you who are still counting, and it's just been such a long road for all of us and our community, but we appreciate the support and understanding throughout this entire pandemic. Pauline, what you read off today certainly resonates. It's been tough for a lot of us. We've definitely seen those reports. We've taken our own internal wellness surveys to assess our staff and the impact it's had on all of us. We know that our federal partners have noted that roughly we are short 80,000 workers across the nation for public health, and this is before the pandemic. And many of us have mentioned the whole way at work that, boy, it would have been nice to have those 80,000 when this started. So we hope that as time goes on and our federal and state partners recognize that we can rebuild our workforce and prepare for this future pandemic. So again, on behalf of our Director, Daniel Pettit Majeski, and our Board of Health, thank you for this and thank you for the acknowledgement.
Great.[1062.64][1062.64][applause] And you're also next on the agenda, so.
One more picture.
Yes.
So we're on to item number three A, which is COVID update from Johnson County Public Health. And we're going to welcome again Sam Jarvis.
Good evening to the Iowa City Council, and as always, appreciate the opportunity to provide updates. As many have been tracking and noticed, we are seeing a decrease in our cases, which we're happy to see. Roughly the past seven days, we've had low 200s reported to our department, and about a month ago, as we reported, we were seeing close to low 400s. So we've seen that cut in half so far. We're happy to see the progress. We're happy to see that many are still complying and wearing masks, especially in indoor spaces. We continue to promote vaccines and provide either off-site clinics or provide the information so folks can make that informed decision. Across the board, we're also seeing hospitalizations decrease for our state, which is a good sign as well, too. We know our healthcare workers and hospitals are very strained right now. We continue to hear about staffing shortages and staffing issues, and so we know that we want to give our healthcare workers reprieve as well, because we know that we're entering a flu season, too, and we're unsure what that will look like. Many have coined it as potentially a twin-demic. And certainly, last fall season, or flu season, we had noted that there was a concern for that as well. But we know that this flu season is different, because our vigilance is different, and we all know and feel it. We know the fatigue is there as well, too. So we hope that the good practices and behaviors that we've all been practicing can stay in place, and that we can also curb flu transmission as well. In terms of our testing capacity, again, a huge appreciation to the City of Iowa City and to our other municipal partners and public libraries who have stepped up and provided access as a Test Iowa at Home test kit pickup site, where we've increased our access capacity to about 16-plus sites in Johnson County alone. And we know that that testing capacity will be absolutely needed as we enter respiratory virus season. So for those who become symptomatic, we will continue to encourage and urge folks to get tested so that they know, and make those informed decisions for work, school, daycare, and going about our lives as we continue on through the pandemic. In terms of our case rate, we are still within high transmission for our community. So again, following the CDC's guidance, we are continuing to urge and recommend that folks wear masks in indoor spaces. Roughly about 84% of counties across the US are still in high transmission. We are seeing that decrease happen, but we hope that that trend continues on and that we can eventually get to low transmission, so that we can, one, be a little bit safer, and then certainly look at what future recommendations will be, which we hope, and many hope, that we won't have to be wearing masks in indoor spaces. But going into flu season, it would be prudent still to do these things. And so again, we'll keep a pulse on that and report out if there are any new recommendations on that front. In terms of our total population vaccination stats, we are at 64.3%. For our 12 and older, we are at 74.3%, and we are just passed by Buena Vista County, so huge kudos to them and congrats for having a higher rate. For much of the time, Johnson County has had the highest vaccination rate in all age categories, but we're happy to see that others are making good progress as well, too, because that benefits all of us. The biggest news and what we're still waiting for, last Thursday and Friday, the ACIP met to discuss the Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine data for boosters. And it sounds like it will be substantially similar to what the Pfizer recommendations will be for Moderna, but those have yet to be issued by the CDC and signed up by their director. So we await that information. So as soon as that is noted and sent to us, we will be sure to share that out with our community. But those are probably the major highlights at this moment. And then to report out on our five to 11-year-olds, we are just now receiving pediatric planning guidance from our state and federal partners. Excuse it. And we know that that meeting for the ACIP is scheduled for November 2nd and 3rd, so we have a definitive date for that, and we'll be waiting to hear more on what that will look like, because we know that at this moment, pediatric planning will be somewhat similar to what we're doing now, but in terms of logistics, there'll be some differences that we'll have to discuss with our healthcare partners and pharmacy partners. So other than that, happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Any updates on what schools are doing?
Yes, so I know that a handful of our schools are continuing to recommend masks. Not all are requiring. I will note that I believe yesterday on our joint entities meeting, our Iowa City School District Superintendent Matt Degner had noted that they've been able to implement a mask requirement, and that's produced positive results and everything, and that it has helped, one, keep cases and transmission low in schools, and that it's also helped reduce quarantine. So we would absolutely encourage all school districts to require masks in school spaces at this moment. We've continued to share that information, and we know that until that happens, we know that it's likely to be expected to have increases in transmission or small outbreaks in classrooms going forward. Because as everyone is aware, many of those folks are still unvaccinated, at least 11 and younger. And it's a very similar kind of mindset with our daycares as well, too. We know that several of them have been impacted as well. So we'll continue to really encourage vigilance with symptom monitoring and mask-wearing at this moment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, we are at items four through nine, which is our consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Sumo.
Second.
All right, move by Taylor, seconded by Weiner. I'm going to ask that our City Attorney just talk about seven B, which is the South District's SMID.
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, this is going to be a topic of great interest, both to the council, I know, and to the public, and so there may be questions about why this item is only on the consent agenda as opposed to having a more substantive discussion on our regular agenda item. So I thought it would be helpful to kind of provide some of the procedure for how this goes, to explain how this will work. So the city first receives the petition and ensures that it's legally sufficient. We've received the petition, and staff and myself have reviewed it, and it does appear to meet all the statutory requirements for a petition to move forward. Then council notifies the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's the item on today's consent agenda, because they, Planning and Zoning, are required to do an evaluative report and to make recommendations based on the merits and feasibility of the plan back to you, members of the council. So after tonight, you send it to the Planning and Zoning. They will do that, and then you will get their report, and then you will set a public hearing. Notice is sent via certified mail to all the property owners within the district, so that they're, you know, obviously aware of what's going on. That has to be done at least 15 days prior to the hearing. Then, excuse me, council then holds that public hearing on the petition for the Schmid District. Council then, and this is what's a little different than other public hearings, council has to wait 30 days after the public hearing before council can proceed with the vote on the district, on the ordinance that would implement the district. So that's the procedure, and so that's why, again, all we're doing tonight is just sending it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that they can do their own report and send recommendations to you. Because council is not to have any, you know, basically, they can't do anything on it until we get that report back and the 30 days have passed, and the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission and so forth, it would be inappropriate to talk about the merits of it tonight. And so that's what's going on tonight.
I just have a question for you. You're saying like 30 days we're like wait period for the council. Is that because we might receive another petition, or why? Why we?
Sure. You would have the opportunity for, the public hearing would take place and so forth, and then it's possible that members of the public would reach out to council members and so forth, or they may want to have an opportunity to, you know, run numbers, you know, whatever the case may be. But unlike oftentimes where council has a public hearing and then votes that same meeting, that same night on an item, here, the statutory requirement is that 30 days are passed in between. And again, I think to just kind of take it slow and just have another opportunity to make sure everyone can be heard, and they can express their opinion to you as council members if they so wish.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on that, counselors? I'm going to open up this items four through nine to the public. If anyone wants to come up and address any of the items four through nine, please do. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Excuse me, I have a question about seven C, which is the tobacco enforcement agreement between the City of Iowa City and the state. Whereas it looks like the state will pay the city $75 per compliance check, and if a permit holder is not found to be compliant in the first check, the city agrees to conduct a second compliance check. My question, and I, if someone's in the note, just to kind of further expand clarity on this issue, is it going to be Iowa City Police conducting these checks? And what, I mean, I guess my question is, what will these checks look like? I was, if someone on staff could kind of expand seven C, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that's within the consent agenda?
Well, yeah, I'm just going to second his comment that answering like, yeah, who's going to be, is that going to be ICPD, or, yeah, expand more on that.
Thank you. And we'll ask all participants that speak to sign in, please, and thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic, any of these items? Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number ten, which is community comment. And this is for any item that is not on the council agenda. And individuals will be given three minutes to speak. The community period will end at seven P.M., unless an extension is needed to meet a minimum of thirty minutes, which we are good on that front. And I will welcome everyone. We ask that you sign in, and there will be a clock right over here. Welcome. Please state your, your name and address.
My name is Mary Grabbin. I live at twenty-seven fourteen Wayne Avenue in Iowa City. I have, my usual, my complaint is my yearly complaint about snow removal, especially the snow removal from the bus stops. When you, it seems like it's intent, the Bobcats or whoever's in charge pile up the snow at the bus stops, so that when you step on the bus, you bring the snow in with you. Or they, they bank the snow up at the incline, so that a person in a wheelchair can't get across the street. And at one time, we had to renew our permits, disability permits. It always had to be renewed in February, the worst month of the year. And how snow is cleaned up in the city? The service alleys are never cleaned and never salted, so that you can walk from the corner of Burlington all the way down past the library. But when you get to the surface, the public service alleys, you know, where trucks make deliveries, it's always iced up. So you have to go out in the street, compete with the traffic, and get to, across the service alley, because it's dangerous, because it's iced up. And furthermore, one year, they surpassed themselves about banking up snow at the bus stop, because they banked up where the wheelchairs come on off Washington onto the curb, so that the only, the person in the wheelchair just couldn't make it. And so what hap, if they were on the right side of the street catching the town crest, the bus driver had to go out into the intersection to let the wheelchairs on, let the disabled people on, let the passengers on, period. And this year is going to be worse with these new bus stops. It seems like the people with the promise of Sunday service, they sold out their good service for a pottage, because we know how long it's going to be. And we need a snow where I, a sign where I live, no parking to the corner, so that the bus, so that the snow can be cleaned up. So it's a matter of, if Iowa City is truly going to be a city, you have to clean up the snow and know how to clean up the snow. It seemed like the persons in charge of cleaning up the snow is from Florida, from Miami, and never saw snow and think it's, it's nice and pretty. No, we got to get on the buses, and in the neighborhoods, it's worse. Because I've had an event where a young man, he stopped his car to help me up on the curb because I couldn't get over the bank, the snow. So this has to be the last year for that. Clean it up, or hire somebody who knows how to clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for having me here. Let me just pull this up here.
And please give us your name and your address.
Sorry, V. Fixmore, Rise, four thirty-seven South Governor Street. And my pronouns are they, she, and shea. And you'd think I'd never done a presentation before. You, where did you, there you go. Funny. There you go. That's what I was looking for. Okay. Yeah, so I am the CEO and founder of Esti Planning and the co-founder for RE Connect Collective, which we've presented before to you. And this year, we worked with the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, who was awarded a human rights grant. This is my company, Esti Planning, worked with Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. And we were basically in the Woodland neighborhood, looking at how can we assist residents there in rental units with some of their housing. And so Sarah Barron from the Affordable Housing Coalition and Steve Nockozel from the Johnson County Navigator was there. So we did two events on Saturday, kind of like afternoon, and then Wednesday, early evening. And the reason why I bring this up is because we, you know, we had food and we had games, and we were able to assist people directly. So we brought people to the people that can actually help them navigate systems and find resources in the moment. And so we worked with about fifty households, and thirty percent of those residents communicated in French, about six percent in Arabic, and we had a Spanish speaker, and the rest were English speakers. Many people came off the streets, because we had a huge banner that said Affordable Housing Resources. We had, you know, we had the flyers that we sent out door-to-door. We worked with Southgate, who has the property, and they helped us flyer and send out emails to some of the residents, letting them know. The flyers were in several different languages, and we had translators there. And I bring all of this up because it was really powerful event to be able to come where people are. And oftentimes, people came with, you know, the flyer folded up to their language to say, you know, I need assistance with housing. And I bring this to you because one example was a couple who has about eight thousand dollars in unpaid rent. And through this one program, we were able to help them find resources to resolve that completely, eight thousand dollars in background. We just did this event last month. So the reason why I wanted to bring that to you is because the collective is, you know, we are doing the work in the community, just to give you an example, but also just to reiterate how urgent the need is to release those emergency ARPA funds. People are experiencing housing issues, food insecurity, all kinds of things. And we just wanted to provide you with that direct example of community residents that are just down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Paula Harmigotcho Guajara, and I am a representative of LULAC three oh eight council that is with the greater Iowa City area, and I currently serve as their president. Our council is currently comprised of over fifty Latinx community members and allies who are striving to advance economic condition, educational attainment, housing health, and human rights of not only the Latinx population in the United States, but specifically our area. And our LULAC three oh eight council actually chose to join quite recently the Racial Equity Connect Collective to further advance the needs and desires of our local Latinx community. This community is rich with hard-working, underrepresented business owners who are eager to gain access to resources that they really, truly need to thrive and build up their dream businesses in our community. They don't want to export them, they don't want to take them anywhere, excuse me, they want to keep them here. They sell conchas, they cut your hair, they serve delicious tacos, and they sell artisanal goods to fill up your beautiful homes. They're our friends and our neighbors, and they deserve the support of the community to grow and prosper. I'm confident that the unique and collaborative work coming specifically from our Reconnect Collective will result in long-term positive impacts for members of my specific community for generations to come. We are excited at the prospect of partnering with the city of Iowa City to continue this important racial equity work, but understand that these ARPA funds hold the magic key. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address a topic that's not on the council agenda tonight? Welcome.
Good evening, council. This is Dan Cobble again. I would just like to make a few comments about the work session that occurred earlier this evening. One of the astounding things to me, and the work session was about the Citizens Police Review Board recommendations that they provided at the city council. Personally, there were several things within that that really just kind of astounded me. One of them was focusing on a lack of transparency in regards to disciplinary proceedings for officers, not only from the public, but also from the Citizens Police Review Board. That is something that I think is extremely concerning, because I think these are the people who are in charge of making our community more equitable, safer for residents. I think that they need to be empowered to do whatever it takes to achieve that. Secondly, it was pretty astounding to me where there were several arguments about how some of the recommendations went up against state law and how the city could not go up against state law. That was pretty astounding to me, given that the city earlier this year has gone up against state law in regards to the mask mandate. And I know the city attorney described how the Citizens Police Review Board recommendations were different, but those explanations, to me, did not really amount to anything. I think it's an instance of the city picking and choosing which state laws it wants to go against and which it doesn't. And in regards to, Councilor Thomas made comments about how the goal is to have zero complaints. Well, I think for, in order to have zero complaints and to have the citizens of Iowa City be happy, I think it requires a complete overhaul of the Iowa City Police Department. Because, I mean, there, if you look throughout the recent history, there are things that are major issues that the city has not worked to solve. And there are significant harms that are occurring to the community that I think need to be addressed. Another thing that was pretty astounding to me was the, I didn't realize that Iowa City police officers are unionized. Police unions, if you look at their role in other cities across the country, they have a very toxic influence on, on cities, because police unions often get in the way of progress to keep citizens safe from the police. So, yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address a topic that is not on the council agenda? Welcome.
Hello. My name's Noah, do you know? I live in Iowa City. Couple things, as I discussed earlier with y'all about the benches and picnic tables and stuff that's going missing, y'all should return those to where they were, specifically the one by Uncle Son, the picnic tables by front crossing, come to mind. Second, is a clue to workers' fund, to actually fund that, the eight million they're asking for from the city, instead of just dragging your feet, waiting for the county to do that, to, like, do that yourselves. You don't have to wait for the county. You can, there's nothing stopping you from doing that now. You're just choosing not to. Yes, just very simple accessibility things about how board supervisors allows people to call in on Zoom and have public comment like I'm doing right now. But your current policy is not allowing people to do that. And whatever, like, yes, you can contact you guys different ways, but that is not the same as what I'm doing right now, public comment that is being recorded live on there. That's not the same as if I was to write you an email, which is also public comment. But that's not a public comment like this is happening right now, is discriminating against people who are not able to come into meetings to get public comment like this, because, I mean, we still aren't in a pandemic, in case y'all forgot that. That still is occurring. People still are not able to go out to areas if they have health problems, stopping them to come to public meetings like this, to give comments like this. And there is no reason whatsoever, besides your choice not to allow that. The supervisors are doing that. There's no reason you are not doing that. That's a good reason. That's not discriminatory, because you can't say it's not. You can, like, try to justify that, however way, twisted words you want, doesn't change the fact that it's not the same. Okay, so you want to talk about stopping complaints and solving upstream problems and doing that within the law? Well, the, there is no law passed saying you can't defund cops anywhere. So if you want to, like, solve the problem, well, the problem is the police, so defund them. And put those, that money to services, actually help the community instead of sending armed agents of the states to deal with every problem, because when you have a gun, you're, that's what you're going to want to respond with, is with force. And you can defund them. There's nothing, the back of the blue law had that, that provision was not actually signed into law that you can't defund. You can defund them. So you should do that. I'm just waiting for time to run out.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one. We're going on to item number eleven, planning and zoning matters. Eleven A, zoning code amendment, form-based zones and standards. This is an ordinance amending Title fourteen, zoning code and Title fifteen, land subdivision to create form-based zones and standards consistent with the South District plan. This is second consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Move by Weiner, seconded by? Burgess, okay, great. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, I just want to draw attention to the memo that was in the packet addressing the question about ADA accessibility, just so everyone is aware that under new construction, commercial uses are required to be accessible, which can be accomplished through at grade entry, providing a ramp or installing a lift, and that such options have to be compliant with the ADA and reviewed at the time of the building permit or change of use permit. So if a new residential building was built under the form-based code and converted, it must also be accessible. Just want to make sure we were all aware of that, which is good news.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are at item number twelve, Rochester Avenue Speed Limit. Ordinance amending Title nine, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter three, entitled Rules of the Road. Section six, entitled Speed Restrictions. Subsection B, entitled Exceptions, to modify the thirty-five miles-per-hour speed zone for Rochester Avenue. Can I get a motion for second consideration and staff has requested expedited action?
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time. Second.
Move by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Second.
Move by Mims, seconded by Sully. All, roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number thirteen, announcements of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Applications must be received by five P.M. Tuesday, November twenty-third. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Move. Second.
Move by Sully, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number fourteen, application, announcement of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Board of Adjustments, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, Building Design Professional, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Climate Action Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Human Rights Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Parks and Recreation Commission, three vacancies to fill a four-year term. Public Art Advisory Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Senior Senator Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applications Must Be Received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, Licensed Electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a unexpired term. Vacancies Will Remain Open Until Filled. We are at item number 15, and we welcome USG. Hello?
Hi, Council. So we have the City Council Meet and Greet, um, next Tuesday. So it's during normal council time, so I would assume you guys might have your calendars open if you do want to stop by and say hi to the mayor. Um, but it's 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the second floor ballroom in the IMU. Hawk the Vote is helping sponsor, so we'll be doing a lot of, like, advertisement for that this week to encourage students. And then we're almost done with the graphic, and I'm going to be sending that to the comms team for the city, so they'll be able to spread that out as well. Um, on the 28th, we have a partnership, meeting with the Partnership for Alcohol Safety. The mayor helped put that together, so we're looking forward to that, to discuss sexual assault on campus and in the community. And then I just wanted to say again that there's, there is early voting available on the 26th, the 30th, and the 31st. Um, the, the one on the 26th is at the Old Cap Town Center, and the other two dates are at the Iowa City Public Library. Um, and then tomorrow is President Wilson's Welcome from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Hantror Auditorium if anybody wanted to stop by. And then lastly, the Iowa Climate Statement, um, relief, was released by the University of Iowa Center for Global and Regional Environmental Research, and Ellie used to work for them, so that's a cool plug. Um, but they have an article in the Daily Iowan calling on Iowa to strengthen their electric infrastructure. And that's all from us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots to take note of today. Yes, lots going on.
Yeah, let me know if you didn't get anything, and I can send that in an email. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. On to item number 16, City Council Information.
So I'd add on to what Anna said about, about voting. You can also vote early at, at the auditor's office, both directly at the auditor's office, but, but more, um, more conveniently for many people, they have the drive-through voting, early voting again. Uh, and really urge people to get out and vote for these local elections, city council and, and school board. They're usually very low turnout elections, so your vote really does matter in terms of electing local officials. And, um, the, the other item is that the, that EC CAG, the East Central Iowa Council of Governments, um, much is, is working on their future visioning process. Uh, they have a number of, of, um, focus groups coming up. You can get, you can get information if you want to participate on that. This, this is an area that consists of Benton, Lynn, Jones, Iowa, Johnson, and Washington Counties. Uh, if you would like information about the, the upcoming focus groups, you can go to Um, and there are, for example, there are groups that you can go to in person or by Zoom on food and bio-processing, insurance and finance, engineering and automation, Main Street and small business, education, technology and services, and biotechnology and medical technology. So they're, they're doing a lot of focus groups to feed into this, um, future visi, visioning process. And I, if you want more information, I can give it to you, but basically that the webs, the, the website can get you into pretty much everything. Again, talk2, to the word, dot ecog.org. So, that's it.
Last Friday evening, the City of Iowa City had an entry in the University of Iowa's Homecoming Parade. Uh, some council members, including the mayor, uh, and myself, walked the parade route together with several city staff members, showcasing the city's climate action efforts with a banner and one of our electric vehicles. Uh, it was a lot of fun and great to see the positive reaction from people in the crowd that recognized our efforts. Special thanks especially to Zach Berg in the Communications Department for making the arrangements and for designing, um, the awesome t-shirts. I'll show this because you two can have them. Zach has a bunch of them, and he just asked that you wear them to community functions and/or just being out and about. They're really pretty cool and showcase that we're the City of Literature as well as our Climate Action logo. So they're really cool. So thank you, Zach, again, for doing that for us. What?
Show and tell.
You what? That's it.
I mentioned it at last meeting, but through the end of this week is the Iowa City Book Festival. So check out iowacitybookfestival.org for events continuing through the weekend, put on by the UNESCO City of Literature.
I wanted to remind everyone that in November, we do have a different schedule for council meetings. We'll be meeting the third and the fifth Tuesday, so November 16th and the 30th. And then in the month of December, we're going to meet on December 14th, which is the third Tuesday. So I wanted to remind everyone of that. All right, we're on to item number 17, Reports on Items from City Staff. Our city manager?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Our deputy city manager?
I just wanted to take a, a moment, this is totally unscripted, but to, uh, as we probably all know, that we lost a great American hero this week, Colin Powell. Uh, he personally was a, a person of inspiration for me personally, and I just wanted to acknowledge that and invite anyone who doesn't know or haven't heard very much about him, uh, take this opportunity to learn about some of the contributions he's made to our country and a perfect example as a, as a patriot.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Our city attorney?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thanks.
City clerk?
Nothing for me.
All right. We're at item number 18. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I make just one really quick comment? Just a quick correction. December 14th is the second Tuesday.
Oh, thank you.
It is the 14th that our meeting is, but it's the second Tuesday in case somebody was listening to that.
Thank you. Yes.
And, and I, I would like to add on to what Red, Redmond said. I worked under Colin Powell for four years at the State Department. Never, never worked under another Secretary of State who cared about his people so much.
He's a worker, though.
Great, great. Thank you all. All right, we are at item number 18. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Mims, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.